To address the board. Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and move right on to E. Town and physical development. We'll turn it over to Commissioner Horvath, who will help with some readings.
Thank you.
I'm going to start with the first reading. Commissioner Horvath and I are going to split this portion of the agenda, just so that he can take a breath and take a drink in between. So, I'll read the first. Consider accepting and placing on file of Chiwasi County Drain Office 2018 Annual Reports.
So, we have a motion. I'll second that motion. Second, any discussion on item A? Hearing none. All in favor of moving on to tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Consider adopting the Chiwasi County GIS mapping fees as a and authorize the board chair or coordinator to execute the agreement. Resolution nineteen three two.
So, we have item B, open motion.
I'll second that motion.
And a second. Item is open for discussion. Okay, hearing none. All in favor of moving on to tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item C, consider approving the use of up to $25,000 from the Waste Management Fund to utilize in household hazardous waste program, allowing the Health Department to conduct two hazardous waste collections in calendar year 2019, and authorize the Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Support. We have a motion and we have a second. Item is open for discussion. Discuss yesterday. This is a good thing. Hearing no more discussion. All in favor of moving on, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Consider approving the use of up to $15,000 from the Waste Management Fund to be used by the Chiwasi Conservation District to cover the cost of two electronics recycling events to take place in the spring and the fall of 2019. The and authorize the Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Item D has been moved. Support. We have a second. Open for discussion. All right, hearing none. What's more, another good thing. All in favor of moving item D on to tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item E, consider approving the use of up to $8,000 from the Waste Management Fund to be used for expansion of the concrete pad and necessary site preparation work at the household hazardous waste facility on Chippewa Trail, and authorize the Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Item B has been moved. Second, discussion. Hearing none. Item B, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, moves.
Consider approving the use of up two $5,000 for the Waste Management Fund to be used for construction of a fishing pier and other necessary Satan improvements at Chiwasi County, at Chi-Town Park.
Support. We have not been supported. Any discussion?
Just a point of information. We were trying to do that last year, but the cold weather kind of wrapped us up here. So, we're going in this year.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Item F, all in favor of moving to tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item G, consider approving the use of up to $1,000 from the Waste Management Fund two-three-zero-two-three-zero-seven-zero-point-zero-zero-zero to be used for food costs associated with the printing of trifold brochures, maps identifying county park locations, and Chiwasi River Trail new watch sites.
Motion, we have a second. Item is open for discussion.
Actually, I want to ask a question. I should probably ask them on all of these. Did we, Tony, do you know if we've got, if we met or talked to our solid waste committee? I know they wanted to be included in some of our decision makings on how we spend this money. I know obviously the household hazardous waste, they like that, the electronic waste they like. But they were starting to get where we put a lot of it into the parks, and they were wanting it into other areas. But I don't know. They might have been involved, I'm not sure if they were or not. Usually, we just make a call to them.
Yeah, I think, if not, I think Cody might have talked to them.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
That was my impression. I was at the meeting and Cody attended, so.
Okay, so we're likely to be, okay, so.
I think they're right, Jeremy. They usually just call.
Yeah, they usually call, because they only meet once every year, so. All right, yeah, I just want to make sure. Thanks.
To be clear, the reason we ask is because they give us the money to deal with. It's like we're asking for commissions and come spend the money for waste management and anything like that. Item G, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of moving on to tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Consider approving the professional services agreement and remonumentation contract between, excuse me. Chiwasi County and Powell Land Survey PC, Mark W. Powell, P. Sorry, PS. For a total cost of $16,500, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
So, we have a motion, item H, for landmark contracts.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that was actually item I. We'll go back and catch H.
So, let's go back and catch I.
Well, I'll second this motion.
Yeah, possible, yeah.
Item I is seconded. It is now open for discussion. And hearing none. We'll move to vote. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries. We'll go back to item H at this time.
Item H, consider approving the professional services agreement and remonumentation contract between Chiwasi County and Landmark Surveying, Mark L. Van Ramdon, PS, for a total of $16,500, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support. We have a second. Item H is open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries. Go back to item J, yes.
Consider appointing the following individuals to the peer review group.
J's, J's on here.
Did I do it again?
J, yeah.
Consider, consider approving the professional services agreement and remonumentation contract between Chiwasi County and Road Professional Services Company, John Rousser, PS, for a total cost of $16,500, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
And so, we have a motion for item J.
I'll second that.
We also have a second. Item is now open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of moving on to tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Um, item K, consider appointing the following individuals to the peer review group for the 2019 Chiwasi County Remonumentation Grant, effective immediately through the 2019 grant cycle. Norman C. Caldwell, retired, David Kennedy, PS, at Craft Engineering and Surveying. Mark Powell, PS, at Powell Land Surveying PC. John Quine, PS, retired. John Rousser, PS, at Road Professional Services Company. Mark Van Ramdon, PS, at Landmark Surveying PC.
My motion is on the floor.
Sorry, support.
And we have the support. Now, it's open for discussion, if there is any. So, we are, it's all right. Hearing no discussion on item K. All in favor of moving on, signified by saying aye.
That completes our report.
Motion carries, and thank you for your report. Very good. And at this time, we'll now move on to county finance and administration. We'll turn over Commissioner Paul.
I move to authorize an addendum to the county's contract with Brady's Business Systems for printers, copiers, fax, scan, and print, as follows. Veterans Affairs, $303.51 a month, line item two-nine-one-dash-six-eight-four-dash-seven-two-seven-point-zero-zero-one. Public Defender, $190.44 a month, line item two-six-one-dash-two-nine-nine-dash-nine-seven-up-point-zero-zero-zero. Sheriff's Deputies and Corps, $35.25 a month, line item one-oh-one-three-oh-one-seven-twenty-seven-point-zero-zero-zero.
Second, item A. I move the second. Any discussion on the item? Right, hearing none. All in favor of moving on, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I move to approve the contract for the Rondo's Painting for Painting of the Second Floor of the District Court Building, in the amount of $11,775. Includes painting supplies delivered. Probate Court Capital Outlay Fund, one-oh-one-dash-one-four-nine-dash-nine-seven-zero-point-zero-zero.
Second, they've moved. It's on the second. Is there any discussion on the side items? Hearing none. All in favor of moving on, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I move to authorize a contract with bigger's floor covering, in the amount of $22,540 for the purchase and installation of carpeting on the second floor of the District Court Building, Probate Capital Outlay Fund, one-oh-one-one-four-nine-nine-seven-zero-point-zero-zero.
The move?
Second.
Seconded, item C, open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I move to consider approving budget adjustment number nineteen dash oh one.
We have a motion for a budget adjustment. We now have a second. The item is open for discussion.
I agree.
Direct attention. Take a second to review if you'd like.
I don't think it's either one of these.
I don't either. I don't believe I have it.
It was in the previous one.
It registered, plat board.
Yeah.
Plat board.
Plat board, one of them.
Yeah.
They were both.
It was like $300, wasn't it?
Actually, it was a hundred and sixty is going into the plat board, just to keep it open.
Line item, yeah.
Yes, and it came out of two other line items. And then, the circuit court, $5,000 was put into visiting judge fees. And the legal fees was reduced from $50,000 to $45,000.
Any discussion questions on the item? Hearing none. We are at item D. All in favor of moving on to tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I move to pursue to the probate court presentation, discussion on efficiencies in the mandatory DHS and childcare fund budgets at the February board meetings. Consider approving budget adjustment number nineteen oh two.
We have a motion. It's on the seconded. It's open for discussion. Budget adjustment number nineteen dash two is in front of us. We can take a second review and you have discussion here. As we look through, is there any discussion from any commissioners over this item? Questions?
So, um, can I ask, Sarah, I see this here, I have this here. Do these budget adjustments meet the need that you have for this year?
Right.
So, it's all, as far as we can. As far as we predict.
Anticipating. The two items were split.
Right.
I don't know. I don't know if she knows.
Yeah, Allison for the adjustment.
Right, okay.
This is.
So, that's, okay, so Allison, is this, this all the money that you needed that had been, we had to have this discussion?
No, no, it's not what I was printing. At the finance committee meeting, the, this was combined with, into two, into a complete.
One.
Yes, one adjustment. And it's been separated out. And now, the, this nineteen oh two is strictly the DHS
Okay.
and childcare portion of it.
I see.
There will be another one, nineteen oh three.
I see. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Doesn't change my answer.
Yes, it's yes before yes, so, okay, good.
So, to be clear, this is mandatory money, you're right?
What, what this does, this, we believe, will be, we have to have a budgeted and mandatory amount. It can fluctuate up or down from this figure. I've seen years where it's a lot more in this, and I've seen years where it's a lot less. But because we do it, the state will reimburse us approximately half. So, I mean, we get half of back for what we spent, but we have to have a line item to show that we're in the ballpark.
Any other discussion on this item? Questions? All right, hearing none. We are now at item B. We'll vote to move it on to tomorrow. All in favor of doing so, signified by saying aye at this time.
Aye.
And the opposed, same side. Motion will carry.
Tomorrow. I move to approve budget adjustment number nineteen dash oh three, to augment the probate and family and juvenile court budgets.
We don't have a second. This item is open for discussion. It's also, when you pack it, refer me, if you want to take a second to review it, we're through. We can discuss it when we have. Questions, comments regarding this item? All right, hearing none.
I'll make a comment. I, I'm glad that it's broken apart, because this was some of the stuff we went over at the budget time, that when we told the departments we were going to try to mirror our 2018 budget as best as we could, we did stick pretty much every other department with their 2018 budget, so I don't feel comfortable moving these items, because some of these are still higher at the adopted budget level than what they would have been in 18, so we did still move a little bit on these. But I'm just, I, I won't be supporting this, that's my thing, I think, because the other, other departments had to stick to the 18, and I don't know that we want to get to the point where then that gets all the other departments asking for budget adjustments for their 19 requests as well.
Well, why shouldn't they? Why should? When we told them no, they've come forward, and we've told them no again, so I echo your comments.
Sorry. The difference, I think, the statutory mandatory part is what makes the difference here. You're mandated to pay it by the state. It's not really something, I mean, yes, we have to prove it, but it's not that we get to send that, neither do they really. They have to provide the services to every person who comes to them, and they, and it's a mandatory that we pay for those services, so.
Commissioner, this portion of it was not part of the mandate.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the, the mandated part was item E? Correct. Okay. Okay, so you didn't separate DHS and probate court. You separated the mandatory part from the non-mandatory part. Is that basically it? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. No, that's okay. I wasn't able to stay for financing, but so I didn't, yeah.
That's good. Is there any questions, discussion on item?
Can I make a comment? Just.
Go ahead.
I absolutely understand your point. I mean, I absolutely get that. To be perfectly honest, some of this stuff, when we were going over what was mandatory, we looked at what wasn't, it, some, you know, it got lumped in. So, I absolutely appreciate that. Some of the, some of the stuff is, was omitted, like jury stuff. We have to have money to pay juries. So, some of it was not mandatory, however, was left out, not understanding that we have our own jury pool of money, so it really wasn't stuff that we said we don't like that you cut it, we want it anyway. Although, I can't speak to that everything other wasn't, because most bands they put back in. It's been sort of an evolving process, to be honest, with the jury. And also, one other thing that went back in is what we call our basic grant. The basic grant is money that we spend, it is 100% reimbursable, and that was, we get $10,000 that we can use on certain things, and 100%, we spend it, and 100% comes back. It's, I mean, no offense, it's no brainer money. It doesn't cost us any. And that was budgeted in only for 5,000, but we have 10,000, so that was an obvious one to put back in. And, but that's not the 50% reimbursable. So, some of these things, while I agree, are, may come across that we just want a little more. Those two in particular were just maybe misunderstood when the budget cuts were made, and we have to have jury, I mean, if we, last year, we didn't have lines for jury stuff, and we had to pay a jury, and then we had, it was a real mess, so we had to have that, and no one has 100%. So, I appreciate your comment.
I do something as well. I could understand, yeah, the jury, probably needing the jury, that's got to be in there. And then, also, the legal fees, because you guys know, just the public defender.
That was the other one, right.
So, that might, those, those could be things that I could see maybe needing, that we might need. But yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, point taken. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, there are.
And may, which one was it, was the, so you said the 100% reimbursable one is not?
Yes, the basic grant. And I'm, to be honest with you, the separation of the, the two different, in the two different ones, I'm trying to, which was weird, so if I could just look at my.
Can we, I would ask, can we, I mean, I didn't want to support this, but I will, I will with the, obviously, the jury mileage and wages and the legal fees, just to move it forward, maybe to talk tomorrow more about it. But I might, I might still be kind of stickler on some of the other ones that we might need to go over again, but I do understand the need for, one, they didn't even have jury in there, and then knowing that they don't use the public defender, they're going to need those, you know, fees, so.
I find the person who's in favor, it's not my motion, but.
Well, no, I just mean, just move it. I would be in favor of moving it forward with the, maybe more of a discussion on, maybe itemizing some of them out tomorrow.
So, we could clean it up if we're.
Yeah, yeah. With the understanding that, yes, I understand those jury and mileage and the legal fees.
If I may, because again, I didn't know that agenda, I must make a difference. I'm a little caught, which is which, I'd be happy to come tomorrow with which ones are non-mandatory and explain it to you.
All right, appreciate it.
I just need until tomorrow to look at which ones were, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted, with the appearance of being unfair, it's nothing against.
No, I get it. I get it. Believe me, I get it.
We have a clarifying.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the DA, our joint account, the basic grant that she's referring to is not budgeted in the final columns, and that is the $10,000 that should be on here. That's 100% reimbursable, please.
Sarah, if you can give me a call.
I will. I'll clarify that for you, where that's going.
That said, we still have a motion on the floor. Unless we withdraw the motion or amend the motion, we're going to move it on, because we have a second, so.
Yeah, I'm all, like I said, I will be willing to move it forward tomorrow with the idea that we would have a little bit more of a discussion tomorrow, and with Sarah coming in tomorrow, we can kind of bring in and itemize what maybe to support.
Is there any other discussion on this item? So, that said, we're back to item F. All commissioners in favor of moving on for discussion tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? None. Item moves on to tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve a letter of agreement, memorandum of understanding, modifying the Circuit Court, employs collective bargaining agreement, so as to replace section seven, bargain seventeen, with agreed upon new provisions.
Motion carries. Second, it goes over for discussion.
Uh, this was kind of something we, it's like a misinterpretation. I think there's two ways to kind of interpret it. I think we at the administrative office were interpreting it one way. Circuit Court Association is interpreting another way, so we, you know, I think we've kind of come to this memorandum of understanding, just kind of cleaning up the language, so that we can kind of do what, what we've been doing in those offices. And then, if this, if this ends up being something that, that the commissioner's side wants to say, you know, we've still kind of interpreted the way we feel it's a little different than at bargaining time next year or a year and a half, we can certainly discuss this and really change the language then. But I'm comfortable with this. I know Judge Clarkson is, the Circuit Court Association is, I think even, most of the judges are on board, so I think it's pretty fair. It's kind of what they've been doing, but we just had that little bit of an interpretation and what the wording actually was. We were doing it this way, kind of interpreting it that way. I mean, so I, I kind of see it just as a, as a house cleaning matter, but I think the board probably should. We, we just recently did it, but we're probably should just have final say, at least to.
Well, because it actually changes the language, the contract approved, the board simply needs to approve it, uh, give it a.
And it's got everything attached, kind of, you know, the parts of the contract, and then the circle part of article seven, it's the one that's turning into this memorandum on the front page, so. Boss, I missed anything? Anyone else? Is Circuit Court here?
Yes, there's a good one to add.
No attachments or anything like that?
I can, Jeremy.
Yeah.
Jeremy did a good job.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Item G, all in favor of moving on to tomorrow, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Consider, I move to, consider moving to BSNA add-on proposals forward to tomorrow's regular meeting, to allow time for commissioners' review and further information before taking action.
I'll second that. We have a motion, we have a second, item H. Discussion, discussion.
Again, an ongoing conversion to BSNA software. One of the proposals here has to do with public record search. Means, basically, you could go online for the open public records after working hours for the Code Act, red strip deed activity. Well, I got that right. Yep. No, this treasurer's? Treasurer, yeah, treasurer. So, I was close. Anyway, treasurer's activities, you can look up your taxes, you can look up, and if you're late in your taxes, you can see what it cost you that month with the, with the penalty, things like that. There's a, again, an awful lot of use by title companies for this activity after closing hours, also for realtors. And once this BSNA, and I, we talked to the gentleman yesterday, he said the phone activity for the employees goes down considerably, because a lot of people will just look online to find out the information. So, that's really good. And that will be taking place, that conversion will start on March 28th. And that'll be going from the hair system, the BNSA system, and they're really tickled to get this going, because it'll all consolidate and flow through the whole county record system. So, it'll make it easier for everyone. And it'll save lots of hours over there in time, which will be a big item. That's one of them. And then, the other one is for the animal license application for, I believe, the clerk's office, or treasurer's office again. And if you want to pay for your dog license, or whatever you're going to do, this will all be online and everything, and this is just part of the BSNA. And again, that'll start on March 28th with that conversion. The conversion will probably take a few days, maybe a week, and so on and so forth, but they're looking forward to it.
Chairman, can I, kind of, on the one, first one, that one is something that I think the board is likely going to adopt. It allows you to, like, not only to access your records, but to make payments on them. But you'll notice there, there's two options. So, the board needs to, commissioners need to look at that overnight, and I will try to get more information before the meeting tomorrow. One of the options is that the county pays for this at the cost of $12,605 per year. The other one, if you see that list of fees that a person could, would be charged to look this up and pay for. look this up and pay for it on record, those fees would go to BSNA. However, the cost would be free to us, they would receive payment from everybody called and looked up that record. So you kind of got to decide which way you want to go, whether you want to have the taxpayer pay this to BSNA, or if you want to pay the $12,605 per year, and, you know...
That was kind of discussed. In large counties, it more than pays for itself. If, you know, if the county pays the fee per year, they collect the money. But a county like Chiawasi, that's, that's kind of tricky, about maybe guaranteeing $12,000, but...
Well, we wouldn't collect that anyway.
I mean, but...
For the, the $2, correct, we would just simply pay that.
Yeah.
Or we could be free then...
We don't make the difference, and we have to pay the difference, is that what?
No, no, you would pick between the other, and, like I said, just because, in many cases, I think many people who call, the convenience of being able to do this online and pay it is, you know, worth it for $2, worth it for $1, in certain other cases and stuff like that.
To me, it's a matter of everybody pays and go pop for the son that will use it, or the people that use it will pay to use it.
Yeah, yeah.
We did this.
That's how I see it.
So, anyway, that's why it was left off, for tomorrow, maybe some more information. And then the one on the animal control module, this is $15,620. I don't think that's an annual fee, but I want to clarify that, and we might want to talk about whether that's needed or not, what all that entails. I mean, paying for dog licenses, a lot of people get that in their bets for $10 each. But I don't know, it may, it may involve more than that, and that's what I want to get clarified.
And if it turns out that we can't have an answer on that for animal licenses, we can, we can just, we can hold off.
Yeah, I think BSNA is going to be one of those, if we want to add modules at any time, we can, so.
But these are the two slated for the treasurer's office.
Looks like annual is going to be $2,105 for every year to have the animal license.
And, but is it strictly just animal licenses?
That's what's looking, yeah.
Of course, I guess that's more than just dog licenses.
So, actually, it's, actually, it's the, after, after year two, it starts to be $2,100. It sounds like this, this $15,000 is going to cover the first year of service and...
Parts and everything.
Yeah, and then service fees and that, and then, it's after two years that we then start paying this annual, so. Quite want to be clear.
Yeah, we'll find to, yeah. We'll find out exactly what counties like our size, how it falls in cost, which way we should go. We'll find out.
Any other discussion on the item? For the clear recording, anything, just voting on moving these two proposals forward to a, for any discussion again, or taken. If we get more time?
Or action.
Or action, if we decide we need a decision. Hearing no more discussion, or item H, all in favor of moving these two forward, you allow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion moves. Mr. Chairman, you give your last report.
Thank you, Commissioner Plauer. At this time, we'll now move on to our report for public safety courts. Commissioner, what's your opinion?
Item A, I move to authorize the sheriff's department to retain up to five assistant cook, kitchen staff employees salary grade one, starting at 12:30 per hour without other benefits, with any work from zero to 25 hours per week for employee to be determined inside by sheriff. Total hours remain as determined by the board.
Support, here we have a motion to support, it's open for discussion, questions? Hearing none, item A, all in favor of moving on, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, I move to authorize $3,743.76 to be paid to Cranwell Farms for care of neglected livestock, and will take it into the custody of animal control from 5/24/18 to 10/4/18, line item 101608840.000.
Support. A motion, we have the support. Item B is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, I move to authorize Chiawasi County Animal Control to purchase one ACSI 6G slide-in animal control unit in the amount of $9,500 from Deerskin Manufacturing, Animal Control Outlet Fund 603970.000. This item was budgeted for replacement this year.
Motion, the Commissioner Garber's second, item is open for discussion. And hearing none, all in favor of moving item C to tomorrow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item D, I move to authorize the Circuit Court to hire a full-time mental health coordinator, excuse me, mental health court coordinator. This position will be 100% grant funded and paid from line items 220-000-702.000 and Non-rep salary grade seven is step four, 2015 an hour, with such other limits on benefits as may be provided in his or her contract with the Circuit Court.
And so we have a motion. Support and a second. Commissioner Plauer, item's open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item E, I move to authorize the friend of the court to hire a support case worker salary grade four, $33,010 to $40,373, to fill a vacant seat.
Second. Motion, we have a second. Item B is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries to tomorrow. Thank you, Commissioner Webster, for that report. Now, we'll move on to our report from Health and Human Services. Commissioner Garber, do you have anything to add?
The only thing that I would add is that I have been asked by the Chiawasi Health and Wellness to sit on the finance committee, and I will attend my first meeting this Monday.
Okay, so, thank you for that. Hearing nothing else from that report, we'll now move on to the Chairman of the Board report. Commissioner, move.
I have nothing at the time.
Well, you do have some good music in your eyes. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. That said, we'll now move on to other agenda items, is there any other agenda items, and any commissioner would like to bring to the attention of the board this morning? Okay, hearing none, we'll now move on to public comments. First, is there anybody that would like to address the board that hasn't signed? Going, hearing none. Commissioner Snyder, you have the floor. Now that your phone is...
Okay, I got a question first. I wasn't aware that Veterans Affairs was paying $300 a month for their electronic equipment, faxes, printers, that stuff, because I know we're sharing it with other offices on that floor, including the public defender. That's 3,600 bucks a year, rent alone. That's a lot of money on that, as it says, you know, I know that these kind, this kind of equipment changes faster than they can put it on the shelf, but still, that's a lot of money. Why are we renting it when it would pay a lot wiser to buy this? It's got to be under 3,600 bucks. It's a thought. Another thing is that I had brought to my attention, is a veteran filed for his, he got his 100%, he filed for his tax exemption for property tax last year, they're still, haven't done anything, the township. First of the year, he filed for this year, still nothing, and I'm just wondering, what's going on? Because it's supposed to go through them, through their board, and then the paperwork will eventually come up to the county. But according to their treasurer, it goes from them with all the prerequisite paperwork to follow it, up to the county clerk, and then to the state, and then trickle back down. And it's not that complicated, it's just take the paperwork and file it. Where it goes from, when he puts it in, is that's the system. As long as he's got the proper documentation, is when he lays it down in front of the treasurer, that should be pretty much it. It's not that difficult, and it shouldn't take a year and a half for him to figure that one out. And if it's happened to this vet, is how many more? I have the same problem. There's not that many veterans in the county that are in this situation where they're asking for tax exemption for being 100% disabled. So it's not really costing the, the townships or the county or anybody else a whole lot of money, but it does help the disabled veterans make it through today. Okay? It's not, it's not like they didn't earn it. And it's just the system being the system. Last thing, are you guys going to do something about helping homeless ass? I've been coming here for a number of years, as is, and it's the same question, is, you know, all we're asking for is a piece of property where we can park, tiny homes on wheels for homeless vets. A number of us veterans have gotten together, we have got trailers, we are building these tiny homes, no cost. What we want to park them someplace, and we all live outside of town. It's got to be someplace where the homeless vets can get to them and stay warm, especially like this last winter, last week. It's darn cold over there when you don't have a shelter of any kind, and nothing providing And all we're trying to do is help our fellow veterans. As it's, so, if it's just find a piece of lawn, fine, you got one right across the street. We'll put all kinds of trailers on it, fricking, around the lawn, or anywhere else. All we're trying to do is help the vets from suffering anymore. They deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Last call to the public, anyone? We have one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there some chance that we could respond to Mr. Snyder's comments? I want, you know, I feel, I feel I definitely want to talk about this, you know, it's some people's date, and, you know, and it sounds like we should press on as quickly as possible, too.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Absolutely. Would you like to?
Oh, I should make the motion?
Well, I don't know if we have a motion, well, we'll pass the motion, but it will be tomorrow. Yeah, if you were to start something, let's do it.
I do. So I'll make the motion.
Okay. All right, for now, we'll go back to you, since that's not to be rude, you're the current public defender.
Regarding the comment of us using the copier facts, all that from Veterans Affairs, when I initially set up the office, I had a borrowed computer, and I think twice I accidentally printed something, I thought it went all the way down the hall to office at the end, so two sheets of paper the entire time since November.
That'd be $4,000.
I brought in, I brought in my own personal former office printer, and Miss Houston did the same with hers, so we haven't used any equipment but our own personal equipment, and we do now have our own, why we had to ask for the approval of $190 for the scanner for our office. So I do not believe, other than in November of 2018, I mean, printed two one-page appearances by accident. But other than that, IT does not have us connected to their printer, Veterans, so I'd just like to clarify that. Thank you.
I just wanted to give you an update on the all-service Saturday that happened on the ninth. I thought it was successful. My office alone on the vital records, which is the one office that I do see clients and constituents turn away, have been 10 people. We serviced for CPLs, a couple birth certificates, a marriage license, and so our phone didn't ring, but the court signed the phone back quite a bit, and they did have one person that was elated that we were open so that they did not have to burn a vacation day. And the treasurer had a couple people, Judge Stewart had some hearings that he was real thrilled that he was able to get resolved, and they needed some assistance with the friend of the court, and the friend of the court was able to do their part in it, and I feel like it was a success, and I look forward to doing it again in October. It has opened up a conversation for maybe booking at something one late evening a month, but we do have contract issues that we have to talk through, but it does start the conversation for availability of our services with unconventional hours. So I was pretty, I was very excited. Everyone that walked in the door got a good greeting.
Good.
So they were all very happy that we were offering it, and I get very good response from other people at functions that I have been at, sounds like something you really need to keep at the forefront.
That's true. A lot of people weren't ready to type, they can't get here. I totally did it. Thank you for that. Commissioner Horvath, would you mind if we had these discussions about moving something forward off the floor, and then maybe write something forward tomorrow?
Yeah.
All right, I'll wrap my head around it. That said, we do the public comment, so at this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting.